On the order of the County Commission meeting of May the 19th, 2025, and welcome all of our guests that are here tonight, invite you to come back any opportunity that you may have to be with us. This time I will introduce Commissioner Chad Bernard for our prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like for everybody to rise. And we're going to give a since Memorial Day is coming up, we want to honor all our fallen soldiers. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for that. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to introduce you all to Nathan Graham. He's going to come and lead us in the prayer.
Let's pray together. God, we are so thankful for today, thankful for the beautiful day that you've blessed us with here in Wilson County. And God, thank you for these great people that you've blessed this county with. God, these men and these women who have dedicated their lives and service to this county. God, I ask that you bless them and their families. God, put your richest blessings on them and guide their hearts and their minds as they guide these people, as they guide this place and these organizations in this county. God, we're so grateful for these people, this place, this community. God, we ask that you give us, give this community your richest blessings. And God, I ask that all the things that be done in this county be done for your glory, be done that point to you. And God, I ask that you just look down upon us with your smiling face and just bless us in all that you do. God, we're more thankful than anything for your son who died on the cross for our sins, and it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
I'd like to introduce Nathan. He's with the Brea Church, the youth pastor. So we thank you for doing that. At this time, I'd like to bring in Oema's color guard. They're going to do a pledge tonight for us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
Order. Pledge.
Thank you. You may be seated. This time, if you will, press yes on your phone to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Mr. Hogs is out of town this week. And Mr. Dow. Twenty-four present and one absent. This time, we'll have public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak before the County Commission that's not here to talk about the rezoning that's on the agenda tonight, that public comment will be a little bit later. If you wish to speak to the Commission, please step forward, state your name and address for the record and...
I'm Ken Young. I live on Shop Springs Road. Everybody should have three pages. Looks like this. First page is some minutes. At your last meeting, the question of reducing lot size in A1 was laid upon the table. Because the question has far-reaching consequences, I'm asking you to resume debate. Here's why. Resolutions pertaining to growth are under the Planning and Zoning Committee. This committee met on February 20th where the reduction of lot size was discussed for 180 seconds. It was not on the agenda, not publicly posted, no motion was made, and nothing was voted on. Then on March 4th, the Planning Office created an application seeking a Planning Commission hearing. Read along at the bottom of your page, too. There is a note associated with the signature line. It says, "The burden of proving the need for the amendment rests with the applicant." In mid-March, the Planning and Zoning Chairman met with the Executive Director of the Water Authority. Soon after, on March 21st, the Planning Commission heard the proposed amendment. At that hearing, the Water Authority's Executive Director was the only person who tried to prove the need for passage. He brought prepared memoranda and extensive visual aids. He spoke as an advocate. The Planning Commission voted down the reduction with a seven to two vote. On March 27th, the planner mistakenly reported to the Planning and Zoning Committee that the Planning Commission did not provide guidance on the issue. Based at least partially on that erroneous report by a four-two vote, the Planning and Zoning Committee recommended you pass the amendment. You tabled it last month, and that's how we got here. I'm encouraging you to resume debate. When you do, ask these questions. Who really was the applicant? Who started all this? It wasn't the planner. He's neutral. It wasn't the Planning and Zoning Committee. They never voted on it. It can't be the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair. He didn't sign the application. And when he had the chance at the Planning Commission hearing, he didn't advocate for passage. He offered no proof of need. He didn't even speak. Since this started, there has only been one person who has ever given testimony in favor of reducing lot size. By definition, wouldn't that be the actual applicant? This is a countywide ordinance. There are many other stakeholders, including three water districts and many other infrastructure providers who will be affected. Why was the Water Authority the only one to speak at the hearing and at the committee meetings? Were they the only one invited? Finally, after the Planning and Zoning Committee discovered the planner's critical reporting error, why didn't they rescind their original vote? They knew about this option, and they had time to do so before tonight. I encourage you to get to the bottom of why this all happened. I want you to resume the debate and let the voters hear where you stand on this. I will answer any question.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak before the County Commission? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period. We'll move on to a report from Steering Committee. Commissioner Fields.
The Steering Committee had a regular session on Thursday, May the 8th, 2025, in the upstairs conference room. That is a correction that needs to be changed on your minutes. So I make a motion to amend those minutes and then approve them.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everyone has the agenda. Without any additions or subtractions, I move the agenda to be adopted.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a consent agenda. It's Resolution 25-5-1. It pertains to establishing a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on ice road. I make a motion that be approved.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Special recognition this time, Commissioner Breeze.
Being a lot of very accomplished students. This evening, I get the honor of being able to honor them. So if the Green Hill High School flag football team will come join me up here at the podium, I know there's a lot of you guys, so if you'll just come through this counter here and see if you can kind of come around and loop all the way around. Oh, you guys are over there. Okay. It's okay. You can go backwards. Yeah, start, yeah. So if you line up here behind me, and then we'll just keep going. Here we go. Here, either way. You can start here, we can fill in here, because I know. So. You got everybody? Got it? Okay. You want to fill it, keep going that way? You want to keep going around? This is what happens when you have a football team up here. But we're going to make room. We got everybody? Here, you can stand next to me. You're welcome. All right. So these ladies here started playing powder puff football at Green Hill, what, two, three years ago? And it was just a school thing. So the grades would play each other. So the freshmen would play the sophomores, the junior would play the seniors, and so on. So they had their own tournament. And then this year, T double S double A made flag football a sanctioned sport. So these girls have had lots of experience, and you can tell based on their results. So with that, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Green Hill High School's inaugural season of girls' flag football. Whereas Green Hill High School's flag football team just completed its inaugural season. And whereas the flag football team went undefeated in its regular season. And whereas Green Hill High School's flag football team ended the season as county champs, district runner-up, and made a Final Four appearance, finishing third in the state. And whereas their final record for their inaugural season was 13 and 3. And whereas seniors on the team include Sarah Butler, Sully Garrick, Courtney Harvey, J.C. Hawks, Lily Hilton, Veronica Jackson, Catherine Long, Morgan Middleton, Ava Neal, Lily Pfeiffer, and Kennedy Plummer. Whereas juniors on the team include Hannah Compton, Eliana Gamble, Bailey Neal, Emma Petroff, and Kaitlyn Watkins. And whereas sophomores on the team include Tatum Crouch, Ashlyn Galbraith, Michaela Randolph, Talia Rodriguez, and McKenna Solomon. And whereas freshmen on the team include Carmen Darrell, Reed McLean, Ari Nova, Ziana Taylor, Katiara Tolbert, and McKinley Stone. And whereas managers for the team were Nick Ware and Will Butler. And whereas the head coaches were Austin Hicks, and assistant coaches were Josh Crouch, Amber Byrd, and Michelle Plummer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Green Hill High School Flag Football Team for their outstanding inaugural season and offer our support and encouragement to the team as they continue to improve and compete at Green Hill High School.
All in favor, say aye.
Would Coach Hicks like to say a word or two? And then after he's finished, if you guys want to, as you guys filter through, if you want to filter out and say your name, I know I butchered a couple. Usually, I call somebody the afternoon of, double check, and I just didn't get to it today. So I apologize in advance. So but this is for you.
I'll be brief. Just want to say thank you for recognizing us. Thank you for taking this time to grant us this exposure to this meeting and taking the time and recognizing the season that we had. These ladies put in a lot of hard work, and you know, obviously, like you said, you know, we had powder puff for a couple of years. And so, you know, it really wasn't serious. And so for them to take each practice day by day and take it serious and, you know, obviously have the positive results that we had was a good deal. And thankful for the coaches, Coach Crouch, Coach Plummer, Coach Byrd, and our two managers over there, Will and Nick. It was a fun season, so we appreciate you guys recognizing us and hopefully next year to be a state championship recognition. But thank you again, and yeah, the Hawks, that's it.
Do you want to come say your name?
My name is Sully Garrick.
I'm Sarah Butler.
I'm Reed McLean.
Hi, I'm McKenna Solomon.
I'm Morgan Middleton.
I'm Eliana Gamble.
I'm Catherine Long.
I'm Hannah Compton.
I'm Emma Petroff.
I'm McKinley Stone.
I'm Bailey Neal.
I'm Carmen Darrell.
Hi, I'm Zai Taylor.
I'm KT Tolbert.
I'm Ari Nova.
I'm Michaela Randolph.
I'm Talia Rodriguez.
Hi, I'm Tatum Crouch.
I'm Kaitlyn Watkins.
I'm Ava Neal.
I'm Veronica Jackson.
I'm Ashlyn Galbraith.
Hi, I'm Lily Hilton.
I'm J.C. Hawks.
I'm Courtney Harvey.
I'm Kennedy Plummer.
Oh, Will Butler.
Nick Ware.
I'm Michelle Plummer, and they dared me to tell you I'm also known as Mama Michelle that takes care of all these people, so.
Amber Byrd.
All right. Like I said, this evening, we get to honor several different students. So Tristan Collier, if you'll join me up here, and if you want to bring your family, and you can bring, I know you brought a lot of families, so you can bring all your family or just mom and dad. It's totally up to you. All right. So this is Tristan Collier, who is Green Hill High School's very first All-American of any sport. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Tristan Collier for becoming Green Hill High School's first All-American wrestler. Whereas Green Hill High School wrestler Tristan Collier had an outstanding wrestling season. And whereas Tristan's record for the year was 42 and 2 with his only losses coming in the Johnny Drennan Invitational at Father Ryan High School. And whereas Tristan Collier was the AAA Region 5 champion at 132 pounds, AA Section 3 champion at 132 pounds, and was the T double S double A double A state champion at 132 pounds. And whereas in one week period on the road to become a state champion, he defeated number one, two, four, five, and six ranked wrestlers in his weight class. And whereas after the season concluded, Tristan went on to wrestle at the NHSCA High School Nationals in Virginia Beach, where he placed third at 132 pounds, making him the first Green Hill High School All-American. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Green Hill High School wrestler Tristan Collier for his year of accomplishment, leading to become the first All-American at Green Hill High School, and offer our support and encouragement to him and his fellow wrestlers as they continue to improve and compete in the wrestling program at Green Hill High School.
All in favor, say aye.
And the amazing part is Tristan is just a freshman. So we have three more years to watch this young man accomplish things here at Green Hill. Would you, would you like to speak? This is for you.
I'd like to thank my coaches and family for supporting me and doing all this. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner Breeze, and we'll move now to Commissioner Fields.
Before I get to the official resolution, we have a little video I'd like for you to watch.
Frightening moments for a man who rushed into a burning home to save a woman. Thank you for joining us tonight at 10 o'clock. I'm Lydia Fielder. Unfortunately, that woman died after that man pulled her out of the fire. As our Sharon Denkwa reports, the man says he would do it all again.
There were flames coming out the roof.
Barbara Partlow says she was watching TV that Monday night and heard people yelling. When she stepped outside, she instantly knew what they were screaming about.
It was just horrible. The fire was there just a little bit through the roof, and then all of a sudden, the house was just engulfed.
It's when she realized someone was inside.
Panic. Fear. Now, how can we get her out?
But before she could move, a man ran inside the house. And this is how he got in. Brian Perry said he opened an now boarded up sliding door, crawled through smoke, and saw a woman lying on the floor.
I just put my shirt over my face and started crawling in as low to the ground as I could. I thought she was, you know, deceased, and she had her phone on her chest, and it was steadily ringing, and the right arm and her right leg was in the fire.
He said he patted her arm and leg until the fire went out and quickly grabbed her.
We got in the kitchen, and that's when the whole little roofing area just fell in, like, I mean, it was just, it was awful. It started, got all of my face, burnt my hair, my shirt caught on fire. And I get her out.
Seconds later, fire trucks and an ambulance pulled in.
We were just sitting there praying for her and just trying to keep talking to her, trying to make sure everything's going to be okay.
But Barbara said her friend died.
We've been the neighbors for 40 years. It's heartbreaking.
I asked Perry why he risked his life.
I didn't think about anything else. I just went to get in there and get her out, you know, because I just didn't want to see someone get burnt alive. That was just, that's awful. I wish I could have got there sooner, you know, but I did all I could. At least, you know, her family could say their proper goodbyes.
For WSMV4, I'm Sharon Denkwa.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Brian Perry for his unwavering efforts to save his neighbor's life. Whereas on February 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, a house fire occurred in the subdivision of Twin Lakes. And whereas the victim of the house was an elderly single woman who had fallen and could not get up. And whereas the victim was labeled to call her son, who in turn called 9/11. And whereas in awaiting the arrival of Oema, let the lake be stationed, the victim's neighbor, Brian Perry, age 36, noticed the fire and rushed over, risking his own life, and entered the rear of the burning house. And whereas crawling on his stomach, he managed to get the victim out of the house just prior to the roof collapsing. And whereas unfortunately, the victim suffered from second and third degree burns and later succumbed to a burns. And whereas Mr. Perry suffered from burns on his own body in his effort to save the woman's life. And whereas Mr. Perry is the father of two, a four-year-old and a seven-year-old. And whereas Mr. Perry showed true courage running towards danger, had a valiant effort to save his neighbor's life. As Jesus said, "Greater love has no one than this, to lay down one's life for his friends." Now, Brian did not lose his life, but he risked it. How many of us in our room would do the same thing? Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor Brian Perry for his unwavering effort to save his neighbor's life. Mr. Perry, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes, sir. You can have the mic.
All right. How y'all doing? I just want to say thank you for this tremendous honor. I stand here humble, not because of anything I did on my own strength, but because I believe God placed me there in the moment of, in that moment for a reason. When I saw the fire, I didn't think, I just knew I had to act. I believe the Lord just gave me the courage to do what needed to be done. And that's all I got to say. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Fields, and sir, for your taking your life in your own hands to save one of our citizens. Thank you for that. I don't know that we got a motion for that from somebody. Did we? All in favor, say aye. And it be fitting, I guess, EMS Week, Mr. Chad Bernard.
At this time, we want to honor our EMS folks this week. It's all about them. They're a heartbeat of our county, literally. And I wanted to invite our EMA committee up here. And also, I'd like to invite Chief Brian Newberry and Captain Danny Clark up. I always thought I wanted to be a EMA worker, because I've known all these guys and gals for a long time. And last year at the fair, one of those tents blew over and hit a girl beside me in my booth and cut her. And I thought about running. I couldn't run because of my solid blood and got real weak at my knee, so I called Marty Heckman. And he come and doctor her up, and it was all good. So we appreciate everybody. And at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Beth Bowman to read a resolution.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, proclaiming the week of May 28th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services provided by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby proclaim the week of May 28th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week: We Care for Everyone. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of EMS professionals and the essential service it provides.
All in favor, say aye. Appreciate that. Y'all can seat. You don't have to stand. Just want to give again a shout out for these guys and gals that are out there every single day doing the job and all the supportive from the administration, our shop personnel, building personnel, and as Ms. Bowman mentioned, there's a lot of others that go along with that, from law enforcement, et cetera, that are out there each and every day as a team helping each other. And we appreciate you guys giving us the equipment that's needed to do that. It's top-notch equipment, and we couldn't do it without your help as well. Thank you.
This time of night, there is a public hearing for rezoning. I hear a motion to go out of session. Second. All in favor, say aye. This time, I'll ask Christopher Rollis to come forward and get us going.
Tonight, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM or thereafter, in the County Commission Room on Wilson County Courthouse located at 228 East Main Street. To hear comments on the following, Jappell Properties has made application to rezone approximately .96 acres from C3 Highway Commercial to C2 Neighborhood, or General Commercial. The property is located at 8220 Central Pike and is referenced by Wilson County Tax Map 96, Parcel 46.05. A copy of this request is on file in the Wilson County Planning Office and has been able to inspect during regular business hours. This is in Commission District 16. Ms. Weathers, this did go before the City of Mount Juliet on April 17th, 2025.
Anyone here to speak on this property tonight? If you will, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please. name and address for the record, please.
My name's Andre Olivier. I live in Mount Juliet on Wyndham Hill Court. Okay. I feel this kind of pales in comparison to running into a burning building. But we were just seeking zoning change for a building there that is commercial. And we wanted to be able to expand our opportunities for rentals for that building. And we think that zoning C-2 would be a better fit.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the property? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period. Hear a motion to go back into session? All in favor, say aye. Christopher?
All right. Again, the application was by Jappell Properties for .96 acres. This is C-3 Highway Commercial to C-2 General Commercial. The property is located at 8220 Central Pike. It was submitted to the City of Mount Juliet due to being in their urban growth boundary on April 17th, 2025. They are forwarding it to the County Commission with a positive recommendation to rezone from C-3 to C-2. It is now before you for your all's decision. And I can answer any questions you have about the zone districts or the urban growth boundaries.
Commissioner Weathers, it's in your district. You can speak. Okay.
Motion to approve based on the City of Mount Juliet's Regional Planning Commission's positive recommendation from April the 17th.
Any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? At the record, if elected, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Report from Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields.
Then on Monday, April 21st, in the upstairs conference room, a copy of those minutes are in your packet. The Minutes Committee also met in regular session on Thursday, May the 8th, in the upstairs conference room. That is a correction. Your minutes reflect that it was on Monday, May the 8th, and it was Thursday. So I make a motion that those minutes be amended and approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Reading of the minutes? All in favor, say aye. At this time, Commissioner Jerry McFarland would like to give you an update on the Spencer Creek watershed study.
Lori? The, if you mark your calendars for July the 1st at 6 o'clock in this room, there will be a briefing by the Corps of Engineers on what I'm going to show you, just a very brief sketch of that this is, the finished product of that lady's plan, if you will, for Spencer Creek, the flood study. For that, if you go on to the next one, please, sir. Gives you an idea of what's in it next, please. We're going to move right through this. It goes into different tables and figures, and now we're going to start by looking at those next. This whole plan, study, I'm not saying it right, study, is based on a 24-hour window and an eight-hour rain. And we know during the March of 2010, we didn't have an eight-hour rain, a 12-inch rain, an 8-inch rain. We had one a lot larger than that. So we're going to the next one. It gives you all the tables of data, and that'll be briefed at that meeting we're going to have on June, July the 1st here. And then we're going to look at about three different slides, or four different slides here. The first one shows all the different mapage of Spencer Creek. And to show you an example of that, we will go to the next one, next slide. And I believe that is Map A7. And what this shows you on the right-hand side, 2-inch rain, 4-inch rain, 16-inch rain, and an 8-inch rain over 24 hours. This is a different, different flood areas to be. If you look right close there, you'll see Lebanon Road will be cut off with that, that amount of water. Next slide, please. This is D6. D6 also shows you there that the Double Log Cabin Road would be cut off. And that is, in the lower right-hand side is where our new school is down there. So it just gives you an idea of how much flooding and depending on the, the amount of rain that comes over the 24-hour period. Next slide, please, sir. And that slide shows you, and if you look right along Double Log Cabin Road, where the blue first starts there, you're going to see with, with the maximum amount of rain in this study, there's already three houses, I believe, underwater. So what we don't want to do is, in the planning, is to allow houses to be built in critical light areas. We want to make sure that if we build bridges in the county, that the flow is capable of carrying the water that could come from these type of rains. Of course, we may then be able to do the warning, watches and warning and evacuation as needed. And then there's one more there, D8, A12 there is. But that also shows you, in the center of the picture there on 109, you see BJ's trailer operation there on 109. And you see how the flooding totally inundates the bridge and all the roadways to that bridge. So this is what we're going to be briefing on, the Corps of Engineers will be briefing on, on the first day of July in this room at 6 o'clock. So invite everybody to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. Thank you. Any notaries to be added, Mr. Goodall? Are the notaries good? Do you have a motion to approve a notary list? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. You are to appoint five members to serve on the Wilson County Beer Board. I'd like to recommend for your consideration, Mr. Wayne Beadle, Mr. Ken Davis, Mr. Allen Major, Ms. Sherry Hyder, and Mr. Jay Watt. Information was about these in your packet. And I hear a motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Library Board, you are to elect one member to serve a three-year term on the Wilson County Library Board. Upon the recommendation of the board, I'd like to submit to your, your consideration, Mr. Michael Stoffel. Information about Mr. Michael was in your packet. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Solid Waste Regional Planning Board, Mr. Lon Myers has decided to resign from the Solid Waste Regional Planning Board concerning health reasons. His term expires on April the 2027. I'd like to recommend to you, Mr. Howard Blades, to fill his vacancy at this time. Information was in your packet about Mr. Blades. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Chad Benard. Emergency Management Director's Report, Chief Brian Newberry.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. You have your report there in the packet. The calls are pretty well averaging throughout the last three months prior. As far as reports from the agency, of course, they're still doing the, the monthly sirene test. And if you didn't see the public media today for the National Weather Service, they're doing some upgrades. So the Noah Weather radios are offline for the next couple of days. So just have other ways of notification, please. Keep that in mind. Local Emergency Management Planning Committee, those have been ongoing with public safety partners as well as non-governmental partners in the community. Couple of training and exercises that we've done. We did the WGO train exercise with RJ Corman. That's required every two years. And it goes between Wilson County and Davidson County, which was here this year. And that went off, went off well. We also participated in a evacuation with a VA where if they were to fly in patients from, say, another part of the United States, then from an EMS standpoint, we would go to Berry Field and then transport those to Nashville Hospitals along with other EMS agencies in middle Tennessee. And then the Emergency Management Workshop was hosted over at Murfreesboro this year. Just to reiterate on EMS Week, again, we appreciate everything you guys do for us, from, from, from pay to equipment. And if you get a chance to get out to a station this week, please stop by. We'd appreciate that. And just kind of ending on a sad note, many of you may have remembered Ms. Suzie Eeks. She worked with us for 32 years, first paramedic, or first female in EMS in Wilson County, a pioneer, and was a pleasure to work with, always smiling. Never heard her say a bad word. So if you, you knew her, you loved her. If you don't, you love her anyway. So just keep there, her family in, in your prayers and thoughts. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Chief. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Law Enforcement Committee, men on May 8th in the upstairs conference room, the minutes in your packet. I move they be receiving, filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. Pretty much all the numbers are pretty much average this time of year, calls for service, number of inmates, state warrants, everything appears to be on par for this time of year. I want to say a few things about, we're getting a lot of calls about trash and inmate work crews and different things like that. So if you've got a road and you need one on the list, let me know because that list is getting long. And we're doing our best to get them all picked up. But we've got some trashy people in this county. The SRO, School Resource Officers Division, they're staying busy. I mean, Director Lottrell's talking about school letting out maybe here next week, I believe. And it's, it's time for a vacation for everybody. So them SROs will be busy training and filling in for patrol in different areas of the department while, while school's out. So it's, I would like to look at the court facility numbers. 11,705 people went through the East High Building court system last month. That's a lot of people. And it's, I sit there and look at that court building going up. It, it's, I'm ready for it to get done because a lot of people using their court facilities. This weekend, Memorial Day will be out in force pretty much all weekend on the water, amping up personnel as it relates to traffic, trying to slow people down. A lot of people out on Memorial Day. So be safe. And let, just so you'll know, we will be out and in force this weekend. But that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee, men, Thursday, the 8th, minutes in your packet. I move they be receiving, filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Director Schools Report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have my packet in front of my report in your packet. Summer Learning, getting ready to kick off June 2nd, got over 1,000 students, K through 8. You have those locations. We'll be providing transportation. In the past, we've done a system where they were certain, they were picked up at certain schools, families had to bring them. But you will see school buses on the road as we'll be getting them to their house, from, picking them up from their house and getting them to their site. Most popular field trip of the year, as always, was our second grade farm days. Wilson County Farm Bureau Expo, May 6th and 7th, over 2,000 students. And got an opportunity to see sheep even being sheared, chickens, pigs, goats, horses, ponies, tractors. Our high school AG and FFA students volunteered and helped in many of these areas. Special thanks to Farm Bureau of Wilson County for their sponsorship and for, to our CT Department for organizing this event. A great event. And, and great for not only our kids, but our, our families that participated in that. We also had volun, or pre-K jamboree. That's when we bring our pre-K kids in for the first time, had over 130 on May the 1st and, and May the 2nd, getting ready to get them in pre-K for next year. Online pre-enrollment for new families to the district, this is their first time families to our district, is taking place now. So we're trying to get a head start on how many new families we'll have next year. And also, we will start student registration on July the 8th for returning students. Personnel update, Ed Sebastian has accepted Director Finance's position. Ed is no stranger to Wilson County schools. He's been in the position as senior accountant for the past two-plus years. We wish Ms. Baxley all the best in her retirement. She'll be hard to replace. Think you've enjoyed working with her as much as I have. Outstanding lady, just in, in every aspect. But we're looking forward to Ed in his new position. He, he will be taking over for her on July the 1st. Board of Education, at the April 24th regular meeting, voted unanimously to name press box at Lebanon High School after Tommy Bryan, honoring him for his dedication to sports journalism, his community involvement. So a very deserving honor. He's covered sports in all schools, especially Lebanon High School for years. We look forward to that taking place sometime next school year. Also, West Wilson Middle School has recently received Gold Star recognition for their Safe Stars Initiative. What this is, it's a collaboration between the Department of Health and Vanderbilt U Sports and Health. It is a free service, but it, the objective is to implement best practices in the area of concussion management, sudden cardiac arrest preparedness, and heat-related prevention. This initiative ensures that schools and support programs prioritize wellbeing students. And we have things in place, of course, through our protocols and policies. But this takes it to a whole nother level. We want to thank Tennessee Department of Health, Vanderbilt U Sports Health Center for their partnership. They recently came and honored West Wilson Middle. And we look forward to trying to add this. As we're seeing more and more, you hear more and more of our young people in sports-related heat issues, but also the heart issues. And, and as you know, we, we do have AEDs in, in all buildings. Some campuses have more than one, especially our athletic facilities. So proud of West Wilson for, for going through that and getting everything accomplished and, and for being honored. Have graduation dates there in front of you. We already had two, Barry Tatum Academy Adult Learning Center. And then starting Thursday night, Beawatertown High School. And then we'll go to MTSU for Friday and Saturday, full days and, and very good events. You have construction project updates. Legardo Elementary is on track. My understanding's going to come right down to the wire. But I was there Friday afternoon. They were starting to lay the tile inside the building. They've assured us we will have that building ready to start school. And then you have a, a report of Central Pike as it's coming out of the ground. That is my report. Oh, and we will be, Thursday will be the last day for students. We're all trying to get to, so.
Discussion, questions, anybody? Question, Bernard?
It will be in place. It was my understanding. It may be a temporary because something on the polls, but it is supposed to be up and operational.
Anything else? Anybody? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from Public Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze. Audit, Commissioner Glover. Broadband, Commissioner Franklin. Tourism, Commissioner Brown. Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance, Commissioner Costly. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith. Insurance, Commissioner McFarland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Judicial, Commissioner Gentry. Legislative Ad-Hoc, Commissioner Costly. Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Rules, Commissioner Keith. Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Planist Directors' Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
Just want to say, my office diligently working on the budget. We are still getting used to this thing we call a pay plan. When the table changes and there's 900 and something employees, and we have to look at what they're being paid in Skyward versus what we have in the roster, and then check where they need to go to. I will not have a complete budget ready for you tomorrow night, but I will have one hopefully by the 27th, definitely by the 27th. So we are working, we're working very, very hard. I, I don't want to single anybody out, but I will, in this particular case. It's come as no surprise to anyone that Lebronia Horton is working really, really, really hard. And so I appreciate all my staff. But I certainly want to say thank you to her. You don't really have anything else unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions, Mr. Maynard? Motion to fully report? All in favor, say aye. Budget Committee, Minutes, Report Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee, men, Thursday, May the 8th, minutes in your packet. I move they be receiving, filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Mr. Marlowe.
Resolution 25-5-6, approving an increase in the income limit for eligibility for the Property Tax Freeze Act.
There is a second. All in favor say aye. Going to defer that to make sure we got everything right. Is that correct, Mr. House?
That could be resolved by the wording of the resolution. I think everybody's still in favor of without any doubt. But in favor of this, we just want to make sure that we've got that right.
Yes, sir. We'll get it next week, next month. Got you. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 25-5-7, accepting the grant for the 2425 Little Grant Program and authorizing our mayor to execute a contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Wilson County.
Got a motion second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, one apps.
Twenty-four, one apps and resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-8, amend the budget appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 25-14.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes, one apps.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-9, to amend the budget appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 25-13.
CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-10, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from Veterans' Reserves to Veterans' Services.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-11, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to Trustees.
CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with the vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes, one apps.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-12, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to the Sheriff's Department. This is a non-recurring, so it would be a one-time.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to cast your vote? Please vote. Commissioner Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-13, to amend the budget appropriation resolution for line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes, one app.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-14, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Debt Service Fund for insurance premiums.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-15, to amend the budget appropriation to make an appropriation from General Fund to Finance. This is non-recurring, so it would be a one-time.
Got a second? Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-5-16, to amend the budget appropriation resolution for line item transfers in County Clerk.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
Resolution passes. Any old business to comment for the body? Commissioner Denton?
Yes, sir. My mic is off. Yeah, or go. All right. I just don't make a comment. I couldn't, I didn't have any right to speak, showed up anywhere, so I couldn't say this a moment ago when we, on the Ag Center report, I don't have any problems with Ag Center with the report that was given. And then I got an email right before I came today, maybe it was sent earlier, but I didn't get it till then, that there was going to be a renegotiation of the contract. In the minutes, someone spoke up and said that Wilson County Promotions or the Fair had a different contract with the Expo Center than everybody else. And I knew that to be the case. What we don't know, and what I don't think is common knowledge, is that they got a quite reduced rate, a tremendously reduced rate, for 30 days, for the whole month. And I was just doing the figuring that under the regular, under the regular daily rate, they would have paid $165,000. And as a result, they reported on their report $36,000 that they paid. And then it cost us at least $14,000 or $15,000. So we would have had about $150,000 profit in our Expo Center, which would have quadrupled our profit for the year under these new numbers if that contract is allowed to go and sign in an equal way. I noticed that we got an email before to where Ms. Gail, I believe, is going to be able to negotiate that contract instead of it being done in-house separate. It will be done just like the rest of the Expo Center. I just want to know if I understood that right. If so, next year it will bring in about a $200,000 profit if it's, if that's the case. So I was just asking that question to see if that was going to be handled that way or will she be able to negotiate that like she does all the other contracts or is it going to stay a separate one?
When does the promotion contract, the promotion?
Comes up at the end of this year.
Well, we were told three years ago when I brought it up, that contract came to us with no numbers on it. I saw the numbers, I know what they are, but they weren't on it when we, when we looked at it. I don't think we had to prove it or nothing. I guess it was just shown to, we hadn't seen one since. We also didn't get a fair report this year. So I just, they can definitely afford it. They, their income was $5.6 million of income and they profited over $700,000 that they show. So it's certainly something we're losing, we're losing every year. They make money every year. That's something about that on our property doesn't seem to be the way it should be. So it should be our greatest month of the year in income there. So this new, if that contract is allowed to be used, and we were told in that meeting when I mentioned that, that contract would be reviewed, even though it said it would not have to be renewed for three years, we were told we'd look at it every year. I haven't seen one since, but this would make a, now that it's coming to you, this would certainly be, give a time to give some equity in our imbalance in this contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me. I think the, no, I think the escalator clause, I think, is in there for a certain percentage. It goes up and then it goes back before the Ag Committee, I believe, on that one. The last contract I've got, and I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll bring you, I'll bring you a description of it next month. The last contract I got was signed by Gail and the other one's signed, I gave a copy the other day, I think to Mr. Tommy on one of them. And I can give you a short version right now. Back when, you know, we started the Expo Center, we told everybody that they'd have to pay to be there. And so we held our foot to the fire for the fair. We didn't charge them full rate, we didn't. Worked out a deal, whatever it was, and you could look at the contract and find out what it was. And, and so that's, that is kind of where that contract came from. Nobody else really pays. Now, as we go back and like it or don't like it, you know, that's the agreement that we've always had with the fair there. Now, I gave you a study not long ago, if you remember, that we figured out over the last few years, they put back in $20 million back into the Ag Center grounds in infrastructure. Some of that infrastructure costs you money, but a lot of it makes you money too. So any, anytime anybody wants to change, you can change it, but there, I think you have to weigh the odds of, of the charges that you want to get, that $150,000, as opposed to how much you're getting back. I think they got back last year one point.
We got $190,000 back. They reported $230,000 in gate sales. We got $190,000 per ticket. So it, of course, the reports they give is 700, 800,000, which is all counts everybody and their dogs that wants to come. But the actual paid gate receipts, budgeted 2.3, remarkably was exactly that. And so we got 190 of that back. One or two of those years, we turned around and gave it back for certain things. But I looked this year, there was very little invested back, very little invested. It was just generally maintenance items, things they needed for this year. Was nothing invested back into it this year hardly at all, or this past year.
I'll get you some numbers, but last year's 1.1 million, I think, the fair gave back into the Ag Center grounds. So I can bring you those numbers and let you look at them. I think if you, also, I'm not for sure what the ticket surcharge sale was either, but I can work this up and get it to you. I think right now the fair is a profitable deal for the Expo and the Ag Center when you look at the numbers that are there.
Well, I just know the contract was signed in, here in-house, and we, it wasn't signed anywhere else. So that was where it was taking, took place. And so this would, what my question is, is this going to allow the Expo Center to be able to do their own contracts like they would anyone else? Or is it, are we, are we stuck for like with 35 years of the same stuff?
No, that contract is renewed along with the, so the fair has a contract with the Ag Center that works out every three years, it rotates, and then the Expo Center for every three years as well, as well as Fiddler Grove. And I think next year is, at the end of this year, is when that renewal for those three year contracts come up. Anything else? Any other questions? I'll be sure to bring everybody a copy of this next, next month, and then you can give me some guidance on it. Any new business? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know everybody's ready to go, but real quick, I think we need to address this. I'd like to bring this up to the body's attention. There's been a concern raised by constituent during the recent steering committee. I know many of you were there. Appears to be a ruling out of Davidson County that may impact how these types of regulations are interpreted and are enforced. It says, I believe it's important that we, as a body, review this ruling and make a decision on how we want to proceed. So Mike, if I can ask you, what would be your opinion in reference to the rule, to the signage issue that's been brought up by the gentleman?
Let me give you, if you don't mind, a little history on how Rule 57 came about. We had a couple of issues here many moons ago where people were bringing signs in, and it wasn't the issue of signs, they were bringing them in on sticks and posts and holding them up back there. And sometimes, some of the commissioners felt that in as a somewhat threatening manner. I know one night, the late Bill Arnold, who was serving as county executive at that time, instructed the sheriff to take somebody out. So, and I'm not sure when we did Rule 57, but we did away with signs. Now, the case that you and the, that your constituent refers to came out of the special session of the legislature in August of 2023, when they, the three people that were raised in Kane, for lack of a better term, were expunged from the legislature and removed from the debate and out of the, out of the debate hall. And so they sued, and Chancellor Martin in Davidson County issued a temporary restraining order saying that you could not prohibit signs in the state legislature during the special session. When the special session ended, the plaintiffs and the defendants, the plaintiffs dropped their lawsuit and the defendants quit defending it and it went away. So there is no definitive answer on long-term how it applies to city councils, county commissions, whatever, about whether or not you can allow signs. Now, I will say, looking at Chancellor Martin's decision, she did some pretty good reasoning in there, I think. And she talked about, of course, rightfully so, it's a freedom of speech issue. So that's one of those things that you don't want to violate freedom of speech because if you do, most of the time those lawsuits are brought in federal court. So we've had the issue raised about it. It may be time for us to look at it, and if we need to modify our rule, we can do that. One of the things that was said, I don't know what was said by Chancellor Martin or somebody analyzing what she said, was how can you keep someone out carrying an eight-and-a-half by 11-inch sign, but they could wear the same thing, a shirt, you know, have it imprinted or embedded, whatever word is, and, and that could be allowed? Now, that's a pretty good argument. Now, in no way did that lawsuit that was, that pended for a few days and then went away, addressed the issue of what we had years ago. And so, in my mind, there ought to be some type of compromise in there. That's just.
So we need to address the language in our own specific rule? What would you advise, or just refer it to the Rules Committee?
Yeah, because, I mean, I can help with the language and stuff, but I can't do anything until y'all change the rule. The gentleman that appeared in front of a couple of committees, you know, kept trying to get us to override the rule, and that's just not the way we do things, and I certainly don't have that authority. But we can, we can work on fixing it if you think it needs to be fixed.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to violate anybody's, you know, First Amendment. I don't think there's anybody in this room that, that wants to do that. And I think that we need to act on, you know, either change the rule or have, have a committee meeting on it and just, you know, try to figure it out. So, that's all I got.
Yes, thank you to everyone who has provided comment on the Land Use Map Version 3. If you haven't been able to provide comment, Director Lawless has stuck around to take those comments. Version 4 will be the next version that will go out to the public and then ultimately back to us. So your comments tonight are incredibly important. Thank you. Anything else on your business? Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite all the commissioners this weekend for the American Legion Field of Flags there at the clock tower in downtown Mount Juliet. Begins Friday afternoon and concludes Monday afternoon. There'll be a patriotic concert Saturday evening as well, so, and the Vietnam Vet will have their food trailer there. So come out and enjoy a really nice day, see a bunch of flags flaying, flying, and hopefully pray for good weather.
Downtown Mount Juliet. All righty. Anybody else? Anything? All right. One more motion to adjourn. I got adjourned.